Of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. Welcome, everyone. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to roll remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Chapter Three, A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, and the current option for remote meetings is extended to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand and join me in saluting at flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Stady.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And the chair is present. We have a quorum. Thank you. Number three, executive session. We are going to ask for an executive session.
Yes, sir.
Relative to collective bargaining, because I had deemed that it would be necessary to go into executive session.
I'll move that we move, we go to executive session pursuant to Master General Law's Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the body, and the chair so declared, so moved.
Second.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah, second.
Motion made in second. It's to window executive session. I'll call a roll. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And Commissioner Shea, it is unanimous, we will be in the executive session. I will tell you that we will remain at the end of executive session. We'll return to complete the most, the rest of our meeting, but don't go away. This would be quick. We are in executive session. Thank you. Bill, can you make the adjustments, please?
Open session. I do give. Oops. Now that we're, now that we're back in open session, I give permission to use my stamp.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, we're back in open session, regularly scheduled Wednesday, July thirty-first, Norfolk County Commission meeting. We are on item number four, minutes. I understand they're not quite ready, so I'll take a motion to move them till next week.
Right. I'll move that we postpone item four approval until next meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And also, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we
Minutes are postponed.
Right. I'll move that we also postpone any actual executive minutes as well from next meeting.
Motion made in second. It all in executive session minutes postponed for next meeting. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five.
Here it is.
Robert Pearson, R S V P Director. A reminder about our August ninth annual volunteer luncheon. Robert.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. You are all well and hello, John.
Hello.
So I want to give you an update. Very excited as we are a little over a week away. Can't believe it, from the big day. Here's what I got. We have a hundred and forty-seven attendees for our luncheon, including a hundred seventeen R S V P volunteers and their guests. Again, this luncheon is scheduled for a week from Friday on August ninth at the Fort Point Sheridan Conference Center in Norwood. We will start promptly at noon with the sheriff's honor guard. I expect we will end around two thirty P M., and I'm looking to get coverage from the Dedham Times and the Quincy Sun, hopefully for before the event and after the event. We will have three R S V P volunteers share their stories, as well as one veteran rides client. The regional director of our sponsor, AmeriCorps, will also speak briefly. Primary gifts this year are a county logoed portable cellphone charger kit and six-pack cooler bag. You'll each get one, too.
Yeah, it's under twenty-five dollars. Fifty? Fifty?
Fifty.
They are.
I think we're all right.
We're okay. We will have five raffle giveaways, including our treasurer Baladi's big gift basket as the grand prize. And I could provide you commissioners with R S V P stats and accomplishments for your remarks. Just let me know if you want them. And lastly, I enlisted Commissioner Stady to announce the Presidential PIN Award recipients. I'm glad to have everybody there.
Put it in your book.
Yeah, I've got it circled, starred, highlighted. I don't know. Chairman Shea, of course, is so well-known. I know he's coming, but I don't know if he was aware. There's like several other things that same day.
Yes.
So there's something in Melbourne.
There is. There's something in Quincy, in your hometown.
Yeah.
Did you get that?
Got to clone yourself.
It's all sorts of things.
Come on.
I'll probably, I'll probably be arriving more towards twelve-thirty, but I will be there.
Wonderful.
I will be there.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Look forward to having you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always a fun day.
Okay, any questions? Robert, we'll, we'll get another reminder next week, Robert.
Okay.
Just to be sure.
Yeah, we'll remind you.
I got something in the mail, too. That program came in the mail, which is beautiful. The actual bulletin, the little booklet, or it came in our package.
Came in your package.
Yeah, very nice.
Glad you got it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. Number five. That was number five.
Right.
Number six, public comment. Each week we have reserved space for public comment at our meetings. If anyone out in Zoom land wants to have any public comment at all, now is the time to make your comment. And I'll ask Director Cronin if he has had any people seeking public comment.
Uh, no, sir.
No, sir. Thank you. Okay, public comment, last call. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to number seven. All business. We have none. Number eight, personnel matters. Commissioner Stady, please.
Yes, sir. Um, there's no changes, right? That was recorded here. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd be pleased to make the following motions regarding various appointments and matters at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. First, I move approval of the notice appointment of Thomas Ruhana of Walpole, long-term history instructor, effective date is eight-twenty-six, and for the rate stated and for the period of time covered. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval for notice of motion of Maurice J. Gilbot of Ossbridge. Replacing Thomas Casado as agricultural mechanic for person at the rate stated effective date eight-one-twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote next.
Next, I move approval of the noticeably regrade call and move for Michelle Ahern of Tivana, Rhode Island as a one-eighty-three-day instructor at the rate stated effective date eight-twenty-six-twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. It all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
Uh, next, too, I'll take together a notice, make a motion of notice for hourly increase for Sally E. Lombardi of Walpole and Joseph P. Donahue of Avon, both cafeteria workers, both at a rate that stated in the particular memo, effective date eight-twenty-six-twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
In seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next one slightly different, but notice hourly, I'll make a motion, notice of hourly increase for Wendy Buchanan of Rentham as a ten-month main office clerk at the rate stated effective eight-twenty-six-twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And last, I move approval on a notice for dress change for Hunter Stewart of East Walpole. Uh, Hunter's moving. This would be for a one-eighty-three-day instructor. The rate stated, the salary stated, the effective date is eight-twenty-six-twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. One more at the president's golf course.
President's golf course. What about that tennis guy?
That's, uh, I'm number thirteen as a contract.
Okay.
That has its own.
I see. So I'll move approve. My motion is then, Peter, uh, Mr. Chairman, notice for job title change for Zoe Robertson of Milton, seasonal golf associate, rate stated, effective date eight-one-twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That completes the appointments, Mr. Chairman. This here by the way.
Number nine, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Mr. Chairman, please do it. Yes, sir. This is the warrant list of seven-thirty-one-twenty-four. Uh, several things are on here, mostly opera. First, I want to number one, I move approval of twenty-five dash four, the county payroll, and the amount is a hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars, seventy-six cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote on favor. Go ahead.
The other one is I move approval for the county expense warrant of oh-seven-oh-five-twenty-five, and the number is fifty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars, fifty-three cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
All right, now, town of Dedham's having a great day. They're gonna get four opera awards. They're all to Dedham.
Great.
So we don't have to say it four times, but I'll just make a motion to approve the opera awards. They're under twenty-five dash five. There are four of them. I'll prove the following amounts. First one is the amount.
Three of the four for Dedham. One is Needham.
It says Dedham, I think.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have just read, okay.
We're going to correct that.
You know which one is Needham then?
I do.
Which one?
Nine hundred seventy-two thousand, six-six-six.
Okay.
Make sure we pay the correction.
Okay, I'll stand. I just said Dedham, Dedham, Dedham. All right, well, still, it's a great day for Dedham. So, uh, Dedham, I've moved, gonna go with the flow. Move approval of the following. These three are for Dedham, just three. The first one, the amount of a hundred seventy-five thousand. The second, the amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars, twenty-five cents. And the third, a little smaller, but thirty-six thousand dollars. So I move approval for twenty-five dash five, three opera grants for Dedham, in those amounts.
Second.
Motion made in seconded on opera grants to town of Dedham, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I don't want Dan Matthews, our friend, upset. So let's, I want to make sure we get this right. Twenty, warrant list twenty-five dash five, this opera one is gonna go to Needham, and the amount is nine hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars. So moved.
Second.
I have a question. What are the, what's the purpose of the town of Needham tonight? What are they using for?
Oh, I was gonna get you some, just a second.
Okay. I can wait. Okay, on Dedham's nine hundred thousand and change, all in favor?
Aye.
I mean, Needham, I'm sorry.
Needham, yeah.
Needham.
Yep.
Okay.
Did Peter get it? Peter got it, right?
Yes.
That's the warrant list for seven-thirty-one-twenty-four. I'll announce the same thing by piece, part of your report.
Thank you. Well, we're gonna get that answer now. Ten, report on American Press for the Plan Act in two thousand and twenty-one.
Take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner. To the question regarding Needham's application. First, this is the final award for Needham under their allotment. This particular infrastructure grant is a project to cover costs for two projects on water quality of Walker Pond. The town will install new overload overflow gate stop logs and install B M Ps for quality, water quality improvements. Um, this is a, as mentioned, an infrastructure water sewer category. It's an advancement on two specific um, areas, Walker category number two and the Walker Pond outlet.
So they have water? Walk-up pond?
Yes.
Really?
If, if my memory serves me correctly, way back when we were beginning.
Yeah.
One of the first awards had to do with, was Needham. It had to do with walk-up.
Yeah, you are right. You're right. You're right.
I don't know walk-up.
Because they were right out of the bat. You're right.
Um, at that time, there were several communities, Needham, Wilson, and Medway come to mind, that were confronting urgent P F O S water issues.
Right.
So, um, the next is Dedham Award, as Commissioner Stady mentioned, eighty-eight thousand, eight sixty-three. This is a supporting public health um, award, and it's to extend the funding from a prior award, eleven ninety-nine, to fund the law enforcement clinical support positions for twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, in this case, the Dedham place is hiring contracted law enforcement clinical support person, which will partner with officers to prevent and respond to violence, as well as address mental health and substance abuse issues. Dedham, second of three, was thirty-six thousand dollars, and it is also a public health grant for software extension. Uh, it also looks to build upon a prior grant award, number eleven eighty-eight, to purchase grant management software for the years twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, the software will be used by the Dedham Organization for Substance Awareness, um, which is used for evidence-based practices to decrease substance abuse in the community. The third of three was also Dedham's last award today totaling one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I did this revenue replacement category. Um, and it seeks to fund, to complete the improvements at the Cape and School, which houses the Parks and Recreation Department. In this case, the funding will be used to improve the plumbing, electrical, H vac, and other security camera expenses, as well as general construction supplies. The project timeline begins in March and ends in September of two thousand and twenty-four, with all funds expended at that time. That, that is the report of the items that you've approved today. Um, I wanted to alert the commissioners that as we move full steam ahead, closing out the last ten million or so of grant funding. Uh, I approved one more grant closeout yesterday for the town of Norwood, and I also had to revise Stotons at their request. Still, they recall is using their full allotted um, award to fund the fire station project, and they're going out to bid and hope to award that bid in early December. I'm sorry, late November, early December. So, um, some of these communities are starting to come up against some deadlines that will conflict with the obligation deadline, and it's why we're doing this closeout. So we all have an idea. We all have eyes open on what they're going to confront. Um, they're all asked to communicate any changes to these plans, but for now, we're up to twenty-one community closeout plans, and I hope to get aggressive as soon as possible. So I have Commissioner Stady.
Thank you, sir. Through you, of course. Um, what's that total amount now that we're giving out? We must be weird with one-twenty-one.
We are.
One-twenty-two?
Well, um, so yes, the amount that you've awarded is approximately a hundred twenty-four million dollars. Um, but about, in the aggregate, about nine hundred and eighty-five thousand has been returned.
Okay.
So it's in the middle of being re-awarded, if you will. So I, I, in the, in the aggregate, I look at it about twenty, excuse me, uh, ten more million dollars to get out the door. Um, I will tell you, I received level three approval yesterday for, um, and this morning for several other awards that'll get us even closer. So we're, we're humming right along.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you have permission. Uh, Representative Tom Vitolo, who's doing a great job up there for all of us, saw him yesterday, part of Governor Healy's entourage. He was the guy that, um, we saw to me, was very excited about the, why the Brookline guy. Did you remember? We all remember. He was spearheading, trying to get them going.
Yes, he was.
That's about a year ago. So he has asked if we would like to either go to Brookline, or if they could come here for a check presentation. He'd be happy to bring along.
Whatever's easiest, whatever he wants.
He said, he has these, the window I had suggested, obviously subject to your approval, that he could come in on the fourteenth, because I thought the seventh is kind of busy. You know, wherever you're in the world.
All right, let's try to put it together for the fourteenth.
He's okay with the fourteenth. He could come here, and he could bring in the Brookline delegation, or
Whatever he wants.
You know, you know, like, that's why I said, I asked the chair, I'll make sure it's okay. So I'll get back to him.
Let's try to do it for the fourteenth.
That'd be great. All right, excited. Um, that's all I have. Great job.
That concludes opera.
And Needham, you're saying Needham's done, right? So what, where did roughly Needham get, end up in? I may?
I don't know the number of, so.
Billy can tell us. We'll get there. All right.
I have it in my office. Just swing by.
Okay.
It's a spreadsheet.
It's great. Wonderful job.
Number twelve, bid openings. We have none. Number thirteen, contract awards. We have one contract. Commissioners, it's in your packet. Come on in.
G'day.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
You're a tennis person, huh? You bring, why you bring to us is tennis.
Welcome, and explain for us, what is this, a rental agreement?
This is a tennis pro rental agreement. It's a revenue contract. Uh, it was done by a quote process, so we solicited for three quotes. We only received the one. And this is Matthew K. He's from Braintree. Um, and he works with, uh, he teaches tennis to underprivileged children and adults.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
This contract, uh, would, if approved today, carry from now through, uh, the end of October, two thousand and twenty. Superintendent, we'll reevaluate the terms of the contract for next year.
Superintendent.
There's no natural extension on this. We're just gonna, hopefully with your permission, go forward with the contract, and then look to renew it each year based on the needs and, and interest.
All right, maybe I have a few questions for you.
Any questions?
Yes, if I could. So, how many tennis courts do we have? I know we have a couple.
Six.
How many tennis courts do we have?
There's six.
So is he using all six?
Two.
Okay, two. Okay, good. And
It is a pickleball court.
Right. I know it's pickleball, too. I know that.
We made the, we made the wall high.
Oh, actually, it's right there. Two courts. So he is doing the instruction to, he's the only one. There's nobody else.
No.
Does he have a helper or assistant?
Nope, sir.
Okay. And he would not be considered an employee, right?
Correct.
It's just a separate, independent contractor?
That's correct.
Okay.
And he will pay the rate stated to the, to the county based on that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, is this our first formal agreement with a tennis pro?
Right.
We had people using our courts before.
Yeah, but not.
And charging people to teach them, and we weren't a party to them. And, and, and I know Kyle uncovered, you know, figured it out. Well, if I say two years ago, it was three or four, but this will remedy that, and it's a formal agreement.
Okay, so that fee is what the county is charging him.
Those courts.
To use the court. Okay. We, what he charges is up to him, right? Whatever he charges, so. Okay. I see. And does he have to provide a insurance case of liability?
That's more the contract.
The tennis pro must provide the county with certificate insurance, general liability, property damage.
Okay, good.
Listing, listing the county as initially insured.
All right.
Okay, well, I
Yeah.
I I think it's good to formalize this and, and know who we're dealing with, because we had suspicion that what's going on without any not with this gentleman.
Right.
And all tennis courts in the city of Quincy are busy, busy, busy. Really has grown exponentially in the last ten years.
Yeah, but in, in a next week.
A lot of tennis courts in Quincy there. You can't go by them. They're all busy. For a number of years.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm waxing around here. I don't mean to. Number of years, our tennis courts, or the city of Quincy's tennis courts, were being used by young people playing street hockey. Again, a good sport, but that's not, but they were supposed to be doing. And now it's all tennis, tennis, tennis. And it's great.
Do we see that coming back, street hockey, or having a, like a
I don't know where they I don't know after, if, if, when the tennis took such a hold sometime in the nineties. And, uh, I don't, I don't know what the street hockey folks are doing. We do, they do have probably a couple of the street hockey facilities, but they were using the tennis courts, which is, but now they're playing tennis. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
And we're committed to redoing those courts this year, next year.
Couple of.
Clear the time. Okay. Any comments on this contract for tennis pro at, uh, Walsall Recreation Facility? Do
So you need a motion?
Now, October twenty-five, you need a motion. Now, I'll signature.
I'll move that the, the county entered an agreement, uh, be authorized to enter an agreement with Matthew K. Of Braintree, Mass., uh, for, uh, the rate stated, for him to use the two tennis courts at the Walsall Recreation Facility, uh, as a tennis pro, and under the terms and conditions, uh, that we are going to be executing this date. How's that? All right?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the contract of order today.
Good way to start.
Number fourteen, report of the county director, director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two items. The, uh, reminder to the commissioners, you are scheduled for a County Commission Association meeting next Wednesday at twelve o'clock.
Right.
Um, the commissioners should at some point discuss their preferred, um, schedule for, um, for county meetings.
There's two copies.
He's gonna sign those. They're right there.
No.
No.
There's one word to sign. Good job. That's the only one.
Thank you.
So respectfully, uh, at some point, the commissioners ought to make it known what day or what time they wish to meet next week, um, given the association's meeting on Wednesday, the seventh.
I could do, I'm available Thursday morning for a remote. I could do a remote meeting Thursday. I didn't disappoint you. I can't get out of, keep kids on it.
Eleven o'clock?
I could, uh, my appointment said one, before ten if we could.
Okay.
Since you give me a little and they want the
That, that's good for me, too. I, I have a conflict now. I, I'm having
Thank you.
I'm gonna be late.
Is Thursday the eighth for you, Peter?
Sure.
At eight?
At all right, ten?
Very good.
Okay.
Right.
So, uh, we will move to, uh, take your business to next Thursday, the eighth, at ten A M.
And our luncheon with all commissioners is posted, and I'm, but
Wait, so I see. This is, no, the meet, so our meeting's Thursday, the regular meeting. But Wednesday, we have the multi-county meeting.
Yeah, right. That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I may not attend that, the Thursday one. Is it probably in my time?
No, we can just use your stamp.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I finalized, I finalized the twenty-first closeout plan yesterday and revised Stotons as we continue our march towards, uh, clearing up the closeouts for all the communities. Um, I want to let the commissioners know, I've embarked on a project to collect all data regarding facility equipment needs from, uh, facility maintenance, Walsall Recreation Facility, and the agricultural school. I will use this list, uh, once I pull it all together and assess, uh, the needs uh, to present to the commissioners as a possible ARPA application to be used at the end of the year for any cleanup um, necessary for funds that may be presented. Happy to, uh, announce that the all performance evaluations for F Y twenty-four have been completed, and the performance goal setting for F Y twenty-five has also been completed. Department has now have the F Y twenty-five goals in place as they proceed for, um, and I just wanted to let the commissioners know, from time to time over the next several weeks, I'll be updating you on the progress we're making, uh, relative to our procurement unit. As you all know, we said goodbye to our long-term chief procurement officer last Friday. Um, you know Amy now is in place several days a week um, to help our transition, uh, during this time as we continue our interviews and, um, hopefully move towards a permanent hire. Um, Amy's immediately working on streamlining the bidding process. Um, this will include using Excel to track all bids that come in, according to dates, um, of the seat and so forth. She is working to, uh, retrain our fiscal specialist, or more, more specifically, work with Will to pull him closer to the C P O, so that they both know what's going on and how they can coordinate, optimize their work. Um, and then finally, reorganizing, uh, some paper filing associated with, um, all records in this office. Um, I've met with Commissioner Shea to discuss with him the long-term plan for how all of the procurement unit needs will work over the next several months. Um, the last item that Amy is beginning regarding, um, reorganization of files is significant. Um, it involves three different locations, and we'll be working as a organization to centralize all of these records and scan them. Uh, well, not scan them, but index them, so we know what they are and where they are. Um, they are dispersed across various locations, and Amy has taken the step to identify this, what we know to be files in this office. So it's the first of a multi-pronged plan to, um, help our procurement level up and, uh, ensure that, um, the fiscal unit, excuse me, the procurement unit functions as a team. So, uh, things are looking up. Very pleased to date with how things are going, and, um, thank Amy for her hard work today. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Any questions to Director Cronin?
Oh. It's good news that she's stepping right in.
I would.
Very lucky.
Pleasure to work with.
All right. Oh, yeah, if I could, two quick ones.
Sure, go ahead.
It's my own typical one, but any more news on the electric charging?
No, well, um, I, I, I emailed, uh, Brian Loflin about a month ago, and he said that he had reached out to Eversource. Um, I don't have an update. Um, I will tell you, on a personal level.
Yeah.
I made an inquiry to a solar company to see if I can, um, get some information about putting solar panels in my house, and strangely, days have gone by and I haven't heard back. This was an industry that was red hot, where people are knocking on my door every week, and I noticed some online, um, companies, I noticed online, some companies that sell solar products have stopped, uh, taking on new work as of July, two thousand and twenty-four, and I'll show, I'll share that information with you offline. It's very strange. So I'm wondering if there's been a, a change in the marketplace, Commissioner, regarding the program?
Could be supply chain, too.
Could be a number of things. It could be the incentives associated with these, uh, programs have started to sunset, but, um,
Although, on a personal note, the other day, there were two young people canvassing West Street, working for a company called Sunrun.
Yeah, they're, that's one of the ones I call.
And they were very good, and they were looking to sign the people.
So
So.
There's some activity, interesting.
But, never know. The other one was the sign, that's gonna be, we're pairing a bid, go out and have that.
We already signed a, a work order for that.
That's all set, hey, great.
Yeah, and I spoke to, I had a conversation with John.
Okay, great. Hey, that's all I had.
While I was, I'm glad you brought that up, while I was talking to Superintendent, he mentioned to me. I'm sorry. That uh the new sign that's up in Rhythm, he gave me the, he gave me the schedule, they'll, they'll all be up in the month of September, hopefully, by the month of September, all, all the courts. Dedham's next, Brookline's after that. Uh, and then Stoughton, they all look the same, and reflect these signs out here, and reflect the sign on the Superior Court. So we have uniformity in our signs, and it looks, the one in Dedham, Rhythm, Rhythm looks real good, the others are gonna be the same, so.
Good job.
It helps.
Aye, oh. Motion to adjourn?
Uh.
One item.
Oh, sorry.
One item.
Oh.
It's a sad one, but um. Prior to adjourning, I'd like to uh, two things, have a moment of silence and adjourn this meeting in remembrance of David Spanky Souza, fifty-seven years old, a lifelong resident of Stoughton, lost his life on Saturday evening, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, being struck by a vehicle on Route twenty-four while he was working for the Commonwealth. D P W. Loving husband of Maria H Zendys. For thirty-three years, he worked for the Department of Transportation for fourteen years, and was a district five foreman in the Bridgewater District. Grisley worked as a truck driver for Boston University for many years. Spanky loved his hometown of Stoughton and helping people in need. He's a former selectman for the town of Stoughton, also served as the chairman during his time, and has been known for playing Santa in many charities and area Christmas parties at Christmas time. And he was the founder of the Parade of Lights Holiday Parade in Stoughton. In addition to his wife and father, Spanky is survived by his beloved children, Holly, Sophia Sousa, Souza, and A J Joseph Souza, both of Stoughton. Brother of Dennis J Souza and his wife, Michelle of Reading, and Danny Souza and his girlfriend Haynes Altabello of Waymouth. So we're gonna do. Adjourn this meeting in memory of Dan Souza, and I appreciate a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, we'll be adjourned, our meeting at uh one fifty, so.